All right, so let's do a roll call.
Debbie Cox here.
Paul Davidson here.
Marty Loszky here.
Dale Beto here.
Mike is unmuted. Where's Johnny? Is he here? Somebody's here?
Mute's on Zoom.
Was that?
Mike's on Zoom.
I think he's muted, isn't he?
There's Santa Claus at the top.
Yeah.
He's not here.
He's not with you.
Because he muted Mike.
Let's see.
Unmuted.
Go ahead.
You hear me now?
Yep.
Okay.
I have to be honest, I just thought it was some mountain man that was joining our call. I didn't realize it was you.
Yeah. I just, I've been working all day. Oh, yeah. Had to take a break so I can do this.
All right. All right, well, we appreciate you attending. So Mike's on Zoom. And we have any conflicts of interest we need to declare?
No.
So moved into Mayor's Town Update. I'll just go over Main Street realignment. Most of you maybe have driven by. There's paint strikes on the ground now. We do have a deceleration lane coming from the Hillville direction and left turn lane. The county or UDOT agreed to do that because their main reason for wanting to do this was the traffic that's heading in that direction towards our Rockville. And they feel like what's on the right-hand side, that's our responsibility. And so there is no slowing a lane on that side, but we do have wet lanes there, yay. Lots of black cock, cattle guards, and we have a culvert. They're getting ready to put theirs in if it's not in already, and ours should be in Friday. And they're going to also install that one as well for us on the Main Street, right, the south side of the county road. And then they're going to start hauling cinders for us to finish up that curve of the road. And then they'll take down those cones before we start driving, so. Anyway, so the other fun thing that happened this week is the UDOT grant. I applied for grants several months ago for general plan. And it's kind of nice to be able to have a professional do that kind of stuff. And Sunrise Engineering will be helping us out. They want to help us get the grant. And it's about a little over $30,000. Our contribution is minimal. It's about a little over $2,000 is all. And we'll get a brand-new general plan. And there'll be some little bit of zoning stuff that'll help us look at our zoning regards to their goal is how does the highway impact our town? And what can they do to help us to mitigate some of that? And so that's why they're handing out the money, and yay, we got it. And so the planner that brought this up, who brought this to our attention, she's one of the other offices of Sunrise Engineering, that's what she is, is a planner. That's all she does. So we have someone that's going to be helping us out with all of that. That's kind of fun. So over the next few months, we'll be interacting with planning commission and everybody. Several public hearings, I'm sure, for feedback as we try to create what we want that plan to look like. So, but that was a fun email to get. And so presentations, we have Sunrise Engineering. It's been forever ago that we approved an impact fee study for all of our facilities. You know, fire and roads, parks and so forth. And it's been in the hands of the attorneys and Sunrise Engineering and everybody, and that's finally come to fruition, and they're going to present it to us. We'll probably just be, have that explained to us today, and then we will be holding at least one public hearing, if not two. Depends on, you know, some of our feedback. This is extensive, you know, there's got to be 100 pages here, is my guess. And we're not going to be expecting to vote on this or anything in this meeting. We're just going to look at it, have him explain it to us, and then he will answer any questions we might have. I've copied for those in the room, and you guys let's see, I have Nate here and Fred. Oh, we've got Marv on too. Gosh, we've got the whole party going here. So we've got three of the guys from Sunrise on here that will be able to answer any questions. But I did copy what our current impact study is. These are off of our website. So anytime you want to refer to that, you can see what we're currently doing compared to what these guys are talking about. So anyway, that's
Mayor?
Yes.
Did that include the storm drain too, on that, for the study?
Yes. Yeah, so anyway, I think I'll just turn this over to Nate or Fred or Marv, whoever's going to take the helm. You guys want to mute yourself, and I'm going to turn this over to them.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take over from now. Like Marty was saying, my name is Nate. I'm with Sunrise Engineering. And kind of the plan that I have is I'll go over a brief overview of the plans and what's entailed within them, and then I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Fred Philpott. Fred did the impact fee analysis itself, and so he's going to be talking about the differences between the plans. So, let's see if I can Mayor, can you allow me to share my screen? I was just going to pull up the plans.
Yes. Can you share? Are you able to pick that up now?
Let's see. Yep, I can. Okay, so what I'm going to go over here, we've got three different plans, like the mayor had said. We've got the Parks and Recreation Plan. And we've got a roadway facility plan, and then we have a storm drain master plan. So briefly, this is the Park and Recreation Plan. And we worked with the town a lot through this on figuring out what the current level of service is and where we wanted to see it go from here. And the purpose of these plans is that as your population increases, the improvements of the town that are necessitated from those increases will be paid in impact fees given by developers. So a few of the park impact fee improvements that we had talked about are to keep the level of service the same as it is right now, basically meaning that, you know, if Apple Valley's population is 500 and you have this many square feet of recreation area, well, your population's going to increase, so you increase your area of recreation. And the improvements that we talked about were a trail that comes from the south side over on the end of Groome Way and connects on to Main Street, just kind of a multipurpose trail. We found that in our discussions that that would be pretty convenient for a lot of people that like to walk there, ride bikes, horses, all sorts of things like that. And then if I can go to the next page, here's the existing park that is going on. The city owns a bit more property there, and we talked about, you know, in the future, extending the park boundaries out, so you have a little bit larger area. And so the costs associated with those are given here. An estimated cost to do all those improvements, we're talking a range of $400,000. And so Fred will get into the impacts of that coming up. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to stop me and ask any questions. I'm open to them. So the next plan we have is the roadway plan. Now, this plan we came up with in talking with the mayor and then Ben, who used to be here. We went through the roads that we know or anticipate are going to be improved here shortly to basically to keep up with the subdivisions that are planning on going into the Apple Valley area. Some of those roadways that came in were the pavement of Main Street here. And that was the majority of the projects. There was also the interchange that was done with UDOT that is going to be done with UDOT. That is included. The improvements with the bridge was already completed. However, the loan on that, we put into the impact fee. And then this street right here. And so basically, all these roads are what we're expecting to come up here pretty shortly. And so we came up with the calculated fees for each of those improvements. And the end result is just under three grand, or not three grand, three mil. Roadways are kind of an expensive deal. But those are the streets that that we found that are going to be impacted and are going to need improvement here shortly. Any questions on the roadway plan?
Hey Nate, this is Marv. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, just to, just to lay a little more of a foundation for the council and the people there in Apple Valley. We, the purpose, the level of service and the purpose of the impact fee facilities plan is to identify a level of service. We, you can't, the Impact Fee Act requires that you stay with, you can't charge more. You can't charge an impact fee to increase your level of service. So that's what Nate was talking about with identifying a level of service. If you want to increase your level of service, you can do that, but you can't do it through impact fees. And I had another comment which escaped me, but keep, keep going. I'll remember that.
Okay. Appreciate that, Marv. Yeah, if I, if I ever say a term that's unfamiliar, or something doesn't make sense, please just stop me and appreciate that, Marv. So that's it for the roads plan. I was going to move on to the the storm drain plan. And now the storm drain plan, we found quite a few areas that needed improvement. It was found that a majority of the borrow ditches through the town have been silted in, and that those are going to need to be redug or reformed. In discussion with the town, it sounded like Apple Valley would like to keep the borrowed ditches, kind of keep the old town feel. And so I, I plan to keep that, but just make sure that those ditches are there and that they're capable of handling the flow. The plan also goes into resizing culverts that don't meet the current flows that are received in Apple Valley. And so this outlines all those areas that, and most of the, most of this section needs, needs to have improvements in that area. Another thing that I was able to observe when modeling it is Apple Valley has a very large, almost ponding effect that happens in this area. Looking at a lot of past maps. This is, all these homes right here are in a, an area that floods and has is a few, or geologic flowways going right through it. And so we had pretty significant flows. You can kind of see all these drainage channels that come from every direction. And we had to come up with the method of of stopping that flow from flooding out all these, all these homes and the homes over here that really get affected once the erosion takes place. But we came up with a channel that runs the length of the fields along the eastern side of the town that runs to the wash, and then a detention base in here that allows to catch the storage needed and then pipe that through over to the wash. And with those two improvements, this whole area will see a lot less by way of flooding to calculate. This plan also includes, let me go back to here. So this wash, we noticed, has been carving out closer and closer to the homes. And so we, we put in here to armor the wash all along here to make sure that none of these homes face erosion when we have the flash flood events that happen in Apple Valley. And so going through to the EOPC, there's quite a bit of improvements that were needed. And grand totaling all of them together, we're in the $4.5 million range to complete all of those storm drain improvements. Nice thing about those is FEMA will help out if, if approved for funding for those improvements. So that's kind of an overview of each of the three plans. Does anyone have any questions on?
Just add to that, Nate. An impact fee cannot, can't be charged, I mean, if you're going to get a grant from FEMA, it can't be charged for that either. And so you'll see in Fred's presentation later that all those, the grant funds and aren't included in an impact fee calculation. And so, and maybe you saw from Nate's exhibits, there were impact fee eligible expenses. So existing needs, things that are an existing need that are, that can't be applied applied to the new growth, that it's not a need caused by new growth. That is not impact fee eligible either. And so all those costs are reduced for the impact fee calculation accordingly.
I think the main thing is we just want to be fair to both the town and to the developers, so the developers pay for the impact we have on the town.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On the impact fees, so a lot of the areas that we're looking at with the drainage are open areas and so on. As developers come in and develop an area, if that particular area needed X amount of dollars to upgrade that drainage, how, how do they charge or how do we assess the fee when the developer comes in for what's going to be impacted with that growth? As far as impact fees?
Perfect, Nate. And so the way that these are typically done is basically it's done off of a an area of land that's currently used versus undeveloped land. And I'll show you an exhibit here. So this map kind of goes over area that's already been developed, and then here's these open areas of land that have not been developed, but will still go into the drainage that's currently in place in Apple Valley. And the way that we do it is we get a percentage. So this is undeveloped land versus the total amount of land, and whatever that percentage is, is the amount that the, the new developments pay.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That answers that question, yeah.
If the development's not in that site right there, they just have to pay for whatever storm drain needed for their development. It was outside that soft spot, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And if we, if we don't have any other questions, that's a brief overview of what's entailed in the plans, and I'm sure you guys will dig into it a lot more. But Fred, do you want to go ahead and, and start your presentation with the impact fee itself?
Yes, yeah, I'll do that. Alrighty, can you see, see my screen in this presentation?
Yes.
Alrighty. Alrighty. Yeah, so Nate provided a great introduction to this process and the different roles we fulfill as engineers and consultants. At a high level, that there, these two documents that are typically associated with an impact fee process, an impact fee facilities plan, and an impact fee analysis. Now, your population is such that you don't have to have an impact fee facilities plan because you're under 5,000 people. And so the code allows for a consideration for lower population communities. However, it's very advantageous to go through this process from a planning standpoint to ensure that you're, you have the appropriate planning document, regardless of impact fees or not. So it's definitely a valuable exercise to have that master plan and then the associated impact fee facilities plan. As well as providing the information that feeds into the impact fee analysis. So we then take that information and run it through our model and, and evaluation to verify the impact fees, in some cases that are calculated, and also to determine impact fees for, for the other services. So process-wise, we're kind of in the middle here where we're looking at a preliminary review or administrative review with you as legislators. There was noticing that we had to go through in order to begin this process, and we've met with staff and the mayor to review, review information. But it's not final, considered final yet. So there is opportunity for you to make comments or additional changes. And then we, we go to the public hearing phase. There are certain noticing requirements that we'll have to fulfill, and the city will have to fulfill with regards to that public hearing. And then at the public hearing, you have the option to adopt, modify, or reject the impact fees. What we propose is a maximum, so it's the ceiling. With regards to impact fees, you can adopt lower than that, which I believe you've done in the past. You've adopted impact fees that have been lower than the maximum that have been presented. You can reject impact fees altogether. You don't have to charge impact fees, but there's a trade-off. If you don't, then you have to make up that revenue some, some way, whether that's the general fund or in your utilities. Then there's a 90-day wait period before you can assess any increase. So if we're proposing changes to your fees and they're going up, then you have to wait 90 days before you can assess that to new development activity. It allows them some time to maybe complete projects that were, that began under some, some different cost assumptions without kind of pulling the rug out from under them midstream. So there is that 90-day wait period. And Nate touched upon several of these elements, but I thought I'd just highlight them here. When you're working in it with an IFFP or through this process and an impact fee study, there are really five elements that have to be considered, that are, that are considered in your impact fee facilities plans. You have to look at demand. Nate showed that, that map of acreage of developed and undeveloped land which serves as some of your demand variable. We also look at population, calls for services, fire services. So defining demand is critical. Then you look at your existing facilities. And then that level of service is a key variable. So defining what is your existing level of service and ensuring that impact fees maintain that level of service. As Marv indicated, you can't use impact fees to raise that level of service. And then those variables help identify if you have excess capacity in your system. And if you need new facilities, the combination of those two variables are what feed into the calculation of the impact fee. And then it's really important to look at number five here, which is how have we paid for infrastructure and how will we pay for it in the future? Because we have to have a reasonable expectation that there's a way to fund this. So as Marv mentioned, as it relates to storm, there, there are grants that are anticipated. So identifying those and removing that component from the impact fee ensures that it's proportionate and fair. But there are some other elements that I want to, I'll highlight with regards to this financing element and getting your input that may influence the ultimate outcome of this. But those are the five main steps that we look at when, when crafting an IFFP and, and the associated impact fee study. So in general, when we look at those elements, we're looking at all areas within the city. There is a, some unique areas with regards to the storm system. Demand, we're looking at population, households, acres, trips, trips on your roads. And we convert that to a single-family equivalent. So basically saying non-residential development, turning that into an equivalent of a residential development, and there's a multiplier applied to that. We look at all of your facilities, ensuring that we're capturing the city-owned, impact fee eligible facilities. And then the level of service is unique to each of the components that we're looking at. So the act requires again that we define a level of service, but it's unique to this, to the facility that we're looking at. So the level of service for storm is different than the level of service for parks and, and for fire, et cetera. So here's the data again. Nate highlighted this as well with regards to the cost, showing a cost of that $400,000 by 2040. We have to look at that growth in a little bit shorter window, so we look at a planning horizon through 2029. Typically, we look at a 10-year planning horizon. But it, you know, this approach ensures proportionality. So really, what we're looking at is a cost per capita to maintain that level of service. When you look at the cost per capita based on that level of service, it's about $305 per person that you need to spend on park, park improvements, land acquisition and amenities. When we look at your household size of 2.38, that produces a fee of $725 per household. To maintain, again, to maintain that level of service and fund additional investment into parks and recreation facilities. So what we, what we looked at is maintaining your square footage level of service based on the square footage that you currently provide to your residents and maintaining that to new development. and maintaining that to new development. Based on growth, we would anticipate another 3,300 square feet of fire facility space. In addition, there was some discussion with regards to providing additional apparatus. The important thing to note with regards to apparatus is the statute, the Impact Fee Act only allows for the inclusion of apparatus over $500,000 in cost. And it can only be assessed, the, the impact fee can only be assessed to non-residential development. That creates some challenge on how we allocate that. And I'm showing you in essence, the maximum that we could, we could charge, but I've highlighted red on the next slide because there's some potential challenges that the city could face under this approach because it creates such a large fee. In essence, we're, we're taking all of that cost and spreading it over a small amount of commercial development and saying you need to pay for all of that apparatus. Where in reality, there may be some benefit of that apparatus to your existing and existing residential and your future residential development. So that's something to, to keep in mind. And, and again, I'll, I'll show that on the next slide. But when we take that cost, it's similar to the, to the storm discussion that Nate went through. We're basically saying, you know, that, that facilities, the combination of your existing facilities and your future facilities benefit both existing and future development. So it's apportioned accordingly. So they're kind of paying their fair share of both existing and new facilities. But then that apparatus line item is just spread over the non-residential component of development. So it, it produces a very high cost per single family equivalent. When I put that in this table here, that takes and basically applies a single family equivalent conversion factor. You can see non-residential has a little bit higher. When you look at shopping center or general commercial versus general office, it produces a, a, a very high fee per thousand square feet. And again, the reason why that's happening is because all of that apparatus is being spread over just this small amount of non-residential development. When I looked at maybe a more lenient approach that doesn't necessarily maximize the impact fee. If we spread the apparatus over all development, all your existing and future residential as well as the non-residential, then that produces a fee that's, that's quite a bit lower. It's, it's more in the $3,000 range per thousand square feet, which is still fairly high, but definitely more palatable from a, an assessment perspective. So that's the one area that I would need, you know, you as legislators with regards to what we're committed to do. Kind of getting your input from that perspective. In addition, going back to those elements that we talked about of, you know, talking about financing, there has to be a reasonable expectation that you intend to do this, to build new fire facility infrastructure in the next 10 years and spend, you know, $400,000 on expansion to your facilities as well as spend $600,000 on new apparatus. So we're looking at, you know, a million dollars of investment. You know, as, as a, as a town council, you need to be committed to doing that. Cause i- if we don't, then you could get into the situation where you have to reimburse impact fees potentially because we're not spending the money on expanding your system. So, so that's the critical component for, for this fee is, is getting that commitment to say, yes, we're, we're going to as a, as a legislative body, commit to funding new infrastructure. And then it's a matter of, you know, do we want to put that all on the backs of non-residential development or, or share some of that across your existing residential and your future residential development? Now, you won't be able to collect that through impact fees because we can only charge an impact fee for the apparatus to non-residential. But in essence, your general fund would cover that, that cost allocation of the apparatus. So before I move on, I wanted to provide some, some time for questions on that or comments, feedback on the, the fire component.
I've got a question for you, Fred, on that. On the apparatus, if, if we got a grant for any portion of that, does that impact this in any way?
Yes.
Now, we're not over the 500,000 or actually less than that, but.
No, it would still be, we, we still show it as apparatus costing over 500,000. But what we would do is reduce the amount that's included in the equation. So if, again, similar to the storm analysis, that if we would show that total cost and then reduce it, i- if you got a $200,000, whatever that is, we would, we would show that reduction and then only include the, the cost to the city in the calculation. So we'd be able to keep that in there because its total cost is higher, but, but then make adjustments for those grant funds that you would receive.
Maybe I'll send the questions.
Okay, so what may be beneficial is if there's additional information that surfaces with regards to grant funding, that, that will be critical for me to finalize this. And then I'll look at including an additional scenario that shows you what it would be if we spread that cost elsewhere, rather than just saying non-residential needs to pay for that apparatus. Again, it's a trade off because your impact fee would go down for non-residential. But that means your, your general fund has to cover that cost. But it's, it's ensuring that there's a nexus between, you know, who you're going to serve with that apparatus. If in some cases, some entities purchase apparatus specifically for non-residential, and that's why they're acquiring the new apparatus. But in other cases, it's more general and we need it for everybody. And so it, it's not necessarily fair to spread it just over non-residential development. And just based on our discussions, Mayor, it seems like it's more the latter where it's really apparatus purchased for, for everybody and not necessarily just because we, we're going to have some commercial development in the community. Okay, so the next element is the transportation. Again, Nate touched upon the, the cost here, that 2.8 million, that's impact fee eligible. We, we look at that and, and verified that cost per, per trip. So we have an estimate of number of trips that will be added to the roadway system. And you calculate a cost per trip. Again, because these future facilities, while we're triggering, triggering these projects in the next 10 years, they serve well beyond that 10 years. And so we allocate just the portion to our 10 year demand. That produces a cost per trip of $2,687. When we look at the multipliers by land use type, that produces an impact fee per land use type. So for single family, it's estimated at $2,660. For, for multifamily, it's a little bit lower. And then again, you can see your non-residential is typically a higher multiplier. And so they have a higher fee per thousand square feet of building space as it relates to transportation. And then for stormwater, again, the total project cost of almost 5 million. But again, as Marv, Marv indicated, there is a FEMA grant that substantially reduces that cost. And so the total impact fee eligible cost is 1.2 million. But that is shared by both existing and new development. And that results in a total cost that's included in the impact fee of $568,000, which produces a, a cost per acre of $2,885 and some change. Again, that would be assessed on a per acre basis. So if you have development that's a quarter acre, it'd be a quarter of that. And larger, obviously, you would multiply it by that acreage. Alrighty, so here is a summary slide that shows those fees. Here, the single family dwelling is at the top of this chart for each of those fees that we looked at. Now, this isn't all your fees in this chart because I, I just summarized the ones that we were looking at as part of this analysis. The parks and rec, fire, transportation and stormwater. You do also assess the culinary water and sewer fee. But you can see here, the, the non-residential, just based on the fees we looked at, would be substantially higher. Again, that's primarily driven by that fire component. So again, my recommendation is we, we probably pull that down just basically spreading the cost of that apparatus across all development rather than just non-residential. And then if there are any grants that you receive, then that would also help bring that into a reasonable level. But then I also provided here for just the single family and multifamily because that's a little bit easier to compare. I, I looked at your existing fees and the proposed fees and, and showed a dollar change and a percentage change here. So it's my understanding, your culinary fee and sewer fee is about, is $1,000 and $1,500 respectively. And that wouldn't change. We haven't, we haven't provided any analysis with regards to changes to those fees. But you can see the other fees come in. That produces an increase of 72% for the single family and 46% for the multifamily residential development. The primary drivers of that for the residential is really that transportation and the stormwater fee is going up. Those are both going up quite a bit in a dollar basis. I, I do want to point out that when I, when I reviewed your schedule, it looked like, at least as it relates to culinary water and sewer, that the actual recommended fee for these categories were much higher at, at the time. What was proposed as a maximum was much higher, but you adopted a lower fee. Is, is that correct? Was anybody here when that happened?
I don't recall. I, I saw the same thing.
Yeah, so it, it's a little, I, I guess why I bring that up is it's a little bit deceiving as showing, you know, hey, these fees are going up by $2,300 or $2,400, where in reality, they would have been much higher, but the, the council made some decisions at that time to, to adopt a lower fee. So whenever you do these comparisons, it's not really an apples to apples comparison. It, you know, it, it just shows the dollar, the economic comparison and not necessarily what, what you should have charged or what your level of service was at the time. In essence, had, had the council adopted the proposed maximums, you would be much higher than $5,600 that we're proposing right now, you know, based on these changes. So just those two categories, you had quite a bit more in impact fees at, at the proposed maximum. So and then relatively speaking. Yeah, go ahead.
On the top right, you got a total fee of 5672. And that shows up on our current one at 5677. But they reduced it significantly. So let's, it's really, you're coming up with similar numbers. But the council decided not to charge.
Yes. Yeah, and I need to. Oh, you know what? I, I need to fix this. I, I didn't pull in the, the culinary and the sewer. So let me just show you that real quick. You can see the, these numbers are actually the same. The 5672 matches the 5672 here. Let me just show you that. Sorry for that mistake. It is. It, it's a much bigger percentage increase as it goes from. There we go. When you add in the, because the soup, the culinary water and sewer doesn't change. So I'll, I'll send this corrected slide to you. Whoops.
Okay.
So here's the, sorry. It, it goes from 3,300 to 8,000. Sorry for that. It, it didn't look right when I started looking at those percentage changes. So it's about a $4,800 increase for single family and a $4,000 increase for multifamily because the culinary water isn't changing that, and the sewer isn't changing. Those are staying constant. And so it, it's showing a pretty big percentage change. But again, we didn't, we didn't look at the culinary water in the sewer. And yeah, they were, they were proposed to be much higher at the time, but were adopted quite, quite low, below that maximum. So that provides a summary of the fees as calculated. Again, next steps. We're, again, these are still draft documents that the public can review, that you can review and provide comment. And then once we're comfortable with the proposed fees and, you know, set it a, an element that you're, you're willing to, to fund. Because again, that's, that's kind of the role as legislators. There's that commitment to say, yes, we're, we're intending to fund this level of investment. Then, then we're comfortable moving forward with the proposed impact fees to do that. Then we hold the public hearing or as the mayor indicated, we, you, you can hold multiple public hearings to review those. And, and still during that process, the public is allowed to provide input that could influence the, the outcome of, of your decision. And then following public hearing, you have the option to adopt, modify or reject. And then that's when they become final. And then there's that 90 day wait period. So, so again, the takeaway for me is really, you know, as you look at the project lists and those costs saying, yes, we're comfortable funding those. You know, looking at fire, yes, we want to expand our fire facilities and, and our apparatus and spend a million dollars in the next 10 years to do that. And, and yes, we want to spend, you know, almost 3 million on our transportation. And, and there's a way to do that with your kind of blessing as legislative body. Then, then we can move forward with the impact fees and, and show those maximum allowable fees. Any other questions on process? On, on specific fees or anything like that?
Any questions still?
Is it Marv or is it Fred? Hey, Fred Delvetto, how are you?
Good.
I'm going to back up a little bit and look at some of your cost projections. And rather than get into that tonight, could you just send me a, a little bit more breakdown of what you've got here, where you come up with your quantities and estimates?
Yes, yeah, so I, I'll, I can provide for the fire. That's, that's really the only one that we've played around with.
I'll just call your office in the morning and give you my contact information and have you email that over to me, please.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Debbie or Mike, do you have any questions?
I'm good.
So Mayor, this is Marv again.
Yeah.
I was going to suggest that, I mean, in between now and, and our next meeting, if, if any of the council or you or John had any, any questions or any input, feel free to send those over to us and to Fred. And, and we'll try to get those answered before the, before the public hearing. So.
Okay. All right, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Doing us, I'm out of the paperwork too, decipher. Nate, Nathan, the other thing is that you did a presentation on, on screen. We need a copy of that as well. Could you email that over to our office?
We need a copy of that as well. Could you email that over to our office? He's muted, so I think it's in the packet. He's just going through this. Not that one.
All right, Mayor, what was that?
The, just the slideshow that you had presented. Would you email that to us or is that in our packet right now? It was what difference to me. Back of us. I mean, the information is probably the same, but the the presentation was different. So.
Yeah.
Just send me the slideshow so we make it part of the record. Any other questions for anybody?
Nope.
All right, so we'll be putting a public hearing together for our next meeting. And in the meantime, try to look at this and, or any emails. Questions or whatever to myself or someone like engineering, Marv over there, or. I, we've got all our emails, so we can help you with email addresses if you want to send them directly.
So Mayor, what would be the date that you would be shooting for for a public hearing? Are you thinking?
That. Third Wednesday in December.
Okay. So who who would be the best to coordinate with regards to noticing requirements for that public hearing? Is there, there's certain noticing hoops that we have to jump through?
Are you okay to? Do that, John? Yeah, probably John. Or myself, either one will will pass around, but John probably the the guy.
Okay, John, what's, what's your email?
It's administrator@applevalleyut.com.
Okay. All right, I will send the noticing requirements.
All right. All right, guys, thank you. Any last question for anybody?
No, thanks.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, our next. Agenda item is a zone change on parcel, the public hearing. For zone change on parcel AB thirteen thirty eight H three. From lowest T of plan development, and this is also. For the map approval. Excuse me. I want to get the verbiage right. The verbiage on that. You're trying to even get around it, isn't it?
I don't see anything on Robert's package except for the ordinance.
Or do I?
Check page forty one.
What did you want?
Yeah, C forty one, sir. That's not it.
Right, that's just the ordinance, but there's nothing.
You know, about that. Planing commission package from last night, get that printed on. I have up here, it is on the one that sent out, it's on page twenty nine, maybe it just didn't print well. Twenty nine. Can you tell us what it's after? It's just the map. The plan. Yeah, or on screen. Let me print off a couple of them. Okay, you have it, you can find it based on screen for us, so you know where you're at.
I saw.
He's twenty nine, I think it's a barrage.
Oh, oh, Debbie, start, what's that right there you got? Yes, he's right there, he has.
That's not it.
Yes.
Didn't have your name in there.
Boy, I probably see a circle because it's such a big grass. I'd like a microscope. Seven hundred times. See the other packet? Plan.
Where's that?
The planning commission packet.
Which page is on, Debbie?
I don't know. Yeah, it is. It's twenty nine. That's what I was looking for. Down below. So here you look. All right, so that's the layout that we're talking about for his project. That's one of the map I was looking for. Need to. As well as the zone change. Guess one on the explanation of this, or we like to base that, I think we've all seen this a hundred times so far. Wanted to be part of the meeting.
Do you have anything to say?
Would you like me to? Yeah. Okay. Have the podium right there, the way the public hearing portion. Yeah, we're, we're in the public hearing portion right now. We've opened up a public hearing on this.
All right. The. What we're doing is basically adding nine.
Look, yeah, go ahead. One second, two things we probably need to take care of is, is this on Zoom right now too, share it to Zoom? And so share screen, use your screen. There you go, down the bottom. There you go. And also introduce yourself for the record.
Robert Campbell and Maria Campbell. Twelve ninety seven Apple Valley Drive, if that's necessary still or not, but. What we're doing is basically adding. I'd like to do a bit of a. Project. Building nine more units similar to what we have with nostalgic style. Of the Zion National Park cabins that were brought over on the property currently. Cabins were built in the late forties. Moved to our project, our property in the. Seventies, eighties, late seventies, early eighties. And it's eleven and a half acres. And we would like to bring in nine more actual units with. Couple living quarters, check in area. Common food area, common areas as laid out on the map. Bringing in fire hydrants. We have respectfully asked from the chief's input, and. He gave us some suggestions and we made those to the map. All the staff. I believe changes have been added, including water department inputs. And other staff input. And there's a total of eleven of those units for the eleven and a half acres. At the site. The. Just a couple notes. Moving to the PD to address and. Just make obvious a couple of the better benefits of the area. First cabin, even it. Maximum build out will still be more than six hundred and fifty feet. From Apple Valley Drive and the turnoff area. Simplified roads leaving much of the natural. Habitat trees. In place as. Currently have here in Apple Valley. Care to be upper. Scale. Nice destination. For Apple Valley.
When do you propose to start this?
We would like to start immediately. We already have two of the buildings, they're up and running on site. We'd like to add cabins to that, so it'll be an ongoing. Process. Once. Once we get the infrastructure in as far as the fire hydrants. We would like to come in and and talk about our. You know, get our business license, knowing that we're in the winter season now and asphalt won't be laid until warmer. Weather comes in the year. It's not preferred environment to lay that in.
Mr. Campbell, how many parking spots have been allocated for those units?
Um, it does say in the bottom corner, I will address that there's more than two per unit. Let me pull that up because it's really hard to see and I don't have that good eyes.
That's fine. Is there any handicap park?
There is. And we we're deciding which unit might be best to address for ADA and for handicap. Over in the main area in this area section here, there is excessive parking and that will there will be dedicated. Handicap parking at that, at those locations. There's a total of twenty two. Parking spots that are required. And at full plan, two per unit, full plan, we are providing twenty six. So there will be some extra in that process.
What is the surface of your road base?
Just, just over thirty thousand feet.
Type of surface?
Oh, asphalt. Yes, road base and asphalt. There will be. If you, if you notice up towards. The top area, we do have some petrocliffs and we want to call it the Petrocliff Trail. There is a trail coming down through the center of the property. That trail will go all the way down, come down to the main road. And all the way towards out towards the street. Those will all be a road base. Trail, so people don't get confused between asphalt and trail for safety of folks, so. There are some trails to walk through, ride bikes, et cetera.
How wide are those trails?
The trails are six, about six feet, three to six feet. Some spots, depending on. Rocks will be, you know, adjusted. But six feet for the trails.
Okay, thank you. Robert, you were the only one. Hang on a second. If we're going to make comments, we got to do the podium so we know who's more. So Margaret Osowski, can you step up here and make some?
Margaret Osowski, one oh two four West Wilson. What kind of sewer system are you going to have?
It will be a septic system. Engineers will get into it. The. Based. On the total number of. Restrooms, it was put in for. They, what's, what was asked for Washington County. Was to take a look at it and they're still looking at it right now to give us some results back.
So so you're not going to have like one of those Ego kind of, you know, like they were going to put up there on the gooseberry thingy?
You know, the gooseberry was being a hundred and something cabins, this is. Eleven units per the eleven and a half acres. One per acre. I know in conversations with Harold Merritt, he talked about unit per acre. And number of bedrooms. Per unit. So there's some formulas and that's really what the engineer and the county were looking at. But it doesn't, it doesn't quite meet the extremity. Because most of the houses in Apple Valley are one house on an acre and. Some of the houses in Apple Valley are pretty big, five, six, seven bathrooms, so. Yeah. Yeah, not mine either.
Not mine. Okay.
Any other public comments? We go to the Zoom and see if anybody wants to mute themselves for public comments. I hear silence on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm good. I don't have any questions.
Anybody else have any questions, Debbie?
No, I asked you.
So the. The motion on this would probably have to include some type of agreement, developed agreement. So it would be. That we are, I would suggest, you know. Verbiage that approves the project, but subject to the agreement, the developer agreement, would that be? Okay, language. And because even though we're saying yes tonight, he doesn't get open tomorrow, he has to. Do all the things that are part of the map and. We have to have a plan in place. And the developer agreement would be part of that, where we lock him into, this is what he's agreeing to. As part of the project, so.
Does a recreational development project like this mandate the development agreement?
The problem we run into is that on eleven acres, if he follows the. Cabin ordinance, it's ten per acre. And so if we say yes, that means a hundred and ten cabins are allowed and we. To prevent that from happening, he's agreed to do a planned development on this only, so. In that developer agreement, we can say that he agrees to limit it to this many, eleven units. And so that's the reason we were coming up to that. You have a better way to do it?
I hate reinventing wheels. What are you talking about?
Hey, I thought if you're, you may tell me how to do it all.
I have, I have a question. What that company just made, isn't he only doing nine rental cabins? Aren't the other ones the facility and the living quarters?
Can you answer that and address it?
Yeah, with a yes or no.
Nine rental units? Or is it eleven?
So there's nine. Nine plus the two original, adding nine.
You're saying.
Eleven rental units.
But is it one to check out, check in, check out, or?
You broke up, pardon. We lost you.
Okay, so. And you have eleven buildings, but are all eleven buildings being rented or is one of them a facilities, management facility?
On the map, the way it's laid out, there's eleven rental units. Two of them are existing, nine are add, there's a check in facility and two, a maintenance facility. And two onsite living quarters.
That's in addition to the?
Right. That's, that's the entire layout of everything. Does that answer?
That, that, okay, yeah, I'm just trying to go back from that to the, to the zone requirement. On what, what we're supposed to have. With what Marty was saying.
Yeah, the zone requirements were you can build up to ten per acre, and that's why we're doing the. Plan development, so we can limit it. Yeah, the zone requirements were you can build up to 10 per acre. And that's why we're doing the plan development so we can limit it to only 11. And we'll, we'll define this in the, in the developer agreement, each of the buildings and I mean, this even the map that we're looking at becomes part of the developer agreement.
Right, exactly.
Just, just to clarify, it's 11 on 11 acres, 11 and a half acres. The other cabin, the zone ordinance was 10 on one acre.
Right. Just, just clarify. That's fine. We're good.
Okay. Any other public comments? I'll close the public hearing on this right now. And let me get my, I flipped my pages so many times. So discussion action, item one is considered possible action on amending general plan for the AV 1338 H3 from OST plan development. And it's, I don't, I'm not sure we are on the general plan of OST. What's the, isn't the general plan like residential or something over there?
Um, general plan is residential.
So anyway, we're going to change the general plan to plan development.
Mayor, yes. Both these changes have to be done by ordinance. And so there's a draft ordinance in the packet. And so my recommendation is just that you, for the, for the general plan, the ordinance is fine as it's in the packet.
All right.
For the zone change, Mr. Cleveland is helping me make some modifications real quick.
And we can tell you what those are and then you can change the ordinance language. So I want to address the general plan first. All right.
Who needs them in order three, one, two?
Tip, number three is a other parcel of his.
I have two for the zone, but not one for the.
So it is one, two and three, but we have, the ordinance change for the general plan designation is 2020-21. I found it early in my packet.
H41.
And so anyway, that would be our ordinance on that is zero dash 2020, dash 21. And. Yeah. So and that's why we just passed, we did a make a motion, pass that like past here, right? Yeah, just make a motion to approve this ordinance.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance zero dash two zero, two zero dash two one.
Okay.
As verbiage identifies.
All right, Mike seconded it. Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And the next one, item two is consideration possible action on zone change for AV 1338 H3 from OST plan development. And that one is.
2020 dash 22.
Next one, do we need to specify the verbiage on with the following changes?
And that is the zero dash 2020 dash 22. And so you guys, that's in the supplemental packet. If you want to follow along, if you guys have time. Let's read that verbiage real quick.
We just changed the verbiage. You just added additional section, subject to. I think what we're going to add is subject to a development agreement between the applicant and the town. That limits the number of cabins to 11. And also this plan was presented in your packet, right?
Yes.
And that adopts this plan and is still subject to all of the other requirements of the town code for the plan development commercial.
In addition to that, we, we would want to also subject to the completion of the agreement with the county to identify the septic service for that.
And that would be the, under the overall development code for, for Apple Valley.
That'll be part of the agreement anyway, self-agreement. So subject to the developer agreement, we're going to put it in there.
And they would, they just have to meet all those requirements. So our, our putting and specifying the number and the layout, for example, does not relieve them of complying with all of the other portions of our code, any applicable codes from the health department, county, et cetera.
Like having toilets. Like having toilets and well culinary water and.
We're going to require those in this one. Unless you want the true capex.
Let me try this. Okay. I'll make a motion, we accept. I don't mind. I have pre-consideration of possible action on general plan designation change for parcels of AV 1369 dash B. AV dash 1369 C, AV dash 1366 A.
That's wrong.
That's wrong.
Just, you just referenced your ordinance number.
H42.
Okay. Are we on number three though?
Or the number three is a, no, we're on number two. Yeah.
Okay, start this again. I'll make a motion that we accept and take action on the zone change for parcel of AV 1338 dash H dash three, ordinance zero two zero, two zero dash two two. With the subject to a completed development agreement between the applicant and the city. Limiting the total number of units to this project for 11 units. And the condition that it does not circumvent, dent and accepts all existing ordinances with our community.
And the map?
And the acceptance of.
The site plan. And, and just for the record, don't know if this site plan's been reviewed thoroughly to make sure it meets all of the code. So we want, so we want it to be substantially similar to this, but it has to meet all the requirements of the code.
My motion was that it does not circumvent those ordinances.
That's subject to.
That's subject to.
All right. Just a recommendation, man. That, that the language of the motion instead of accept would be to approve.
Okay.
If, if.
Let's change that to approve. I thought I said accept and approve. So.
All right. Second. All right, vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Mike, was that an aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, motion carries. That was a big motion.
Thank you.
All right, item three is consideration possible action on general plan designation for parcels AV 1369 dash B, AV 1369 dash C, AV 1366 dash A dash five. And AV 1366 eight of six to A five. This is the property, just for conversation's sake, that's outside of Cedar Point. Where the roundabout is, it's across the highway from Cedar Point. It's got a lot of, a little over 100 acres and he has just divided these lots up into smaller portions to build eight homes out there in that area. He's putting in roadways and doing all that stuff. And right now we're changing, he's a little over 100 acres for eight homes.
It's 106 acres, but all the homes are private. Nothing's for sale. It's for their family.
It's just for their family. And the general plan shows that residential, but it's R1. And so we're just changing it to Ag because he wants to do Ag five. And so both will always remain big lots out there.
As you go into subdividing lots, the average is 13 acres per household. Subdivided 13, you're going to serve by three or four and leave everything as Ag.
Well, minimum, at least, all thing in eight lots total. Well, the minimum size is five on Ag. So it can't go any smaller than that. And we've, I've seen the, the lots split application on that. And, but everything's going to be five or more.
There, there's a total of nine lots. And the reason why there's actually nine is because there's a little triangle piece because he's moving the, the road. So that it lines up with the roundabout on Cedar Point so that it's safe to come and go from where the road currently is. When he moves that road, there's a little tiny sliver of his property that's going to end up eventually going to state or, you know.
Nothing to do with it.
Yeah. So, so that's nothing that's, you know, really buildable. It's going to end up being, the power lines on it, it's got a power easement open already. But other than that, it's just eight lots and they're building eight houses.
Any questions?
Rich, when you pull out of Cedar Point and you would go left, that first entrance where you would go, like if you were going on your four wheel or the right of that road? Is that the part where the triangle is going to be and?
And so Cedar Point has a roundabout. And you pull out of there, if you go left and then try to, you go.
That first quick.
150 feet, then you make a right. Yeah. So now that's not going to be there. It'll be straight through where the roundabout is and then it'll escrow back to that road.
Eric, I didn't get, I didn't get an answer to my question because the mayor rudely interrupted you. I want clarification just so I can understand the property. You've got 100 acres of ground. You're going to put eight homes on there. That's twelve and a half acres per households. My question is, are the lots going to be twelve and a half or are they going to be five and the balance of 60 acres going to be used for agriculture?
They're, they're all different sizes. This, one of his family members only wants a five acre piece. It's like his mom and dad. Couple of his, you know, sons or his brother and somebody else who want a little bit bigger piece. And so they're, they're different sizes, but the smallest is five acre.
I'm raising my question. There's no vacant land left over.
Right. Vacant. In other words, some of them are, might be a 20 acre parcel here, 20 acre parcel there.
There's one that's like a 40 acre parcel.
It's all going to come to the 1068.
Yeah, exactly.
He's just dividing those into eight lots.
Exactly.
All will be that and some will be bigger than others.
And it might be that one family member's putting in a little bit more money for the project. So he gets a little bit more land for his house.
Final question, does he need another son?
We can ask him. Any other questions? Not rudely interrupting anybody. Do you want to make a motion on that? You guys all right with it? Good. We have a, actually probably have a ordinance on Allen. Find it.
23 and 24.
I mean, I will be changing ordinance, changing the general plan map designation for parcels AV 1369 B, AV 1366 C, AV 16, 1366 A dash five and AV 1366 A dash six as agriculture.
I, I'd like to back up for a second. So we're actually also including that motion. This is ordinance zero dash 2020 dash 23. And then Mike will second it. Does that still sound good to you?
Yeah, second.
And can I recommend a change on this though? Because we're, we're changing the general map to agriculture five acre and it's actually just agriculture. It shouldn't have a five acre.
That's in the addendum, the new one. And you didn't pull out that five acre part.
So are you okay to modify your motion to minus the five acre? It is a general map. A general map can just be only agriculture. Then when we zone change it, it can be Ag five, but.
There was nothing in my motion.
I didn't hear it. You said make a motion for five, just agriculture.
Okay, sounds great. But it's, because it's written on here, I just want to make sure that we're okay and everybody knows we're going to cross that off. All right, anyone else vote?
Aye.
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 And motion carries on that. And consideration number four. Possible zone change for the same parcels. AV 1369 B, AV 1369 C, AV 1366 A dash five, AV 1366 A six from OST to Ag five. Motion? No, that's just me reading the agenda item. So I want to make a motion on that one. And what's on the ordinance, which is?
Twenty-four. Deal 2029. I make a motion that we accept and approve zone change for parcels of AV 1369 dash B, AV dash 1369 dash C, AV 1366 dash A dash five, AV 1366 dash A dash six to agricultural with the ordinance number D zero two zero, two zero dash 24.
And this one you would include the five. Because it's an actual zone. We have an Ag five, Ag 10, Ag 20.
And I add the five to the A dash.
All right. Anyone wants to second?
Second now.
And vote?
Aye.
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 All right. Item number five on our agenda is consideration possible ordinance, creating tourist commercials on. We worked on this a while back and kind of got dropped by the planning commissioner briefly. They didn't realize they didn't finish it up. And so they've done the homework and finished that up. And in kind of a nutshell, what we have is a matrix that. Find out. Trying to move hotels and hotel, anything that's tourist related into a tourist commercial zone. And limit where that tourist commercial zone can be installed.
Let's start with the limit. Where is, where is the location?
Well, I, I personally have got an issue with that. I'll, I'll kind of show you on page three of that document. Item C, it says that the location TC zone shall not be located within 1500 feet of any existing residential zone. And I mean, our goal is to limit these things to like, that's our 59, I think that's verbiage seen in here and Main Street. And we're trying to create a commercial board or that area. And that's where we want the tourist things to be located. So they're not sitting around at Cedar Point or, you know, Gooseberry or any other place else where they're just. And, but the 1500 feet causes a problem to put it anywhere. Because if you, the 1500 feet on Main Street. I think if you have measured, it's probably about 1500 feet from Main Street to Coyote.
Well, it goes, it goes beyond that. I, first of all, whoever did this put a lot of time, a lot of interview for this, a lot of, a lot of effort, but I agree with you. It, that's my challenge is as a developer, if I'm developing, for example, currently, we're developing a, a water park at Hurricane. Are, we have a surf lake where we have 87 homes that we're building around the beach portion of this, of this recreational area for overnight stay. If you made us move out 1500 feet, we wouldn't pay for it. So I think you'll find that that's problematic on most items when you're building type of recreational center or zone area. You're going to have overnight stay condominium type, type stuff here, which should.
I'm not sure that would be considered residential. So.
Overnight stays. But, but overnight stay is still, even in recreational zones, it's still residential because you have some.
I guess it could be, but I can see the downfall of listing the feet because 1500 feet, that means the back of your property can't be within 1500 feet of Coyote, which is all residential, which we just exced out the whole city. I'm having anything. And I think the goal is, is to not hand those TC zones out. And I think the goal is is to not hand those TC zones out except in that Main Street or fifty nine corridor, but there can be other. Instances that make sense.
Well, you already have some standard controls over commercial areas to begin with, so that would be applicable to government without having to do the fifteen hundred feet. So if you have a Chevron gas station here, you've got some setbacks for that already. But then you go into maybe even more problematic on page. Page nine, I can see that, your setbacks on these buildings, these are the same or smaller than most residential setbacks. You've got ten foot side setbacks, twenty five foot front, front, which would typically be front and back of curb or front, front and back of road. And then you've got ten foot rears.
What do you recommend?
I would like to take a little bit more time to look at that and come up with a with a favorable number because. That box of setbacks, and Richard can attest to that, he's he's a home builder. You know, that's a typical residential setback for a sixty five hundred to eighty five hundred per foot lot.
Okay.
And I doubt these commercial units are gonna have that, so.
No.
If you allow a hotel to go in, then they can go, I mean, not Miss Lososki's yard now where she lives, but, you know, they can go put a house, I mean, a commercial unit within ten feet of her house property line. So if she's got a thirty foot setback, you only forty foot from commercial building, so it needs to be a little bit more breathing room in that area.
Should be about a hundred feet. From building to the property line, because most of those buildings are gonna be two plus stories. So should have at least a hundred feet.
I think, I just think that if you get into, let's say, for example, you're in a. You know, we end up with a strip mall on Main Street. I don't know that, you know, you've seen it built in some areas where one strip mall touches the next one. You know, where there's.
But when they touch each other, that's different.
That's commercial to commercial.
We're talking to commercial to residential.
Right.
In addition, most of those commercial units need services behind the buildings. And while this is a minimum standard of ten, it also gives the building shove it back there and also to vacate those those services. Then you look at some of the other components that you're putting in here, a commercial unit ideally is a hundred feet. Unless it is a foot traffic commercial unit, which is identified in here. If you're doing small pizza and T shirt shops that are just one door front, rooftop shops. Then you want them closer to your foot traffic, so.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this up and volunteering to take care of this for us. So if if it had any feedback, you'd like to give the help, we'll let him beat this up and email it out to us in a minute. That's awesome.
That's the other part that ruined it.
No, you have very good, you have some really great ideas and I I agree with all of them, because I, I think this was problematic when we wrote.
Three struggles.
I I think our goal is not noble, but, you know.
Well, I think in my last statement, I think what we probably should be going towards is a breakdown of what type of commercials and identify those setbacks for those types.
There you go.
But I think we need to act on this rather quickly because right now it's still allowing like RV trucks. And C one, C two, or C three next to residential. And that's something that we purposely put it in the TC zone not to have it near residential.
Right.
See, I think she's volunteered to do especially, so.
You think she'll do it quicker?
I do, I think she's volunteered to do that.
You heard wrong.
You have some great insight on this, so let's try to edit this out and if you get a break.
I'll cancel Thanksgiving, you're good enough.
There you go.
Bargains, I love you, have a good week.
It'd be nice to have, we get to have.
Can we table this?
Uh, yeah, I go ahead and make a motion on that.
I make a motion that we table item five, possible action ordinance, creating tourist commercial zone. Zero dash twenty twenty dash twenty five, until we, until we can further study the.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Envoice, registry.
I reviewed all the texts, anything's good.
I'd like to take it home and dive into it before I have any questions.
Take away.
I'd like to take it home and look into it a little bit before I have a chance to ask any question about it.
On this, okay.
I don't have it even surfaced. This is the last person I've seen.
Okay. Well, we can put this off the next meeting, I guess.
They may have seen it, I just haven't had access to my emails, so.
So will you make a motion to table that? Shall we table, if you guys looked at it, we, if we want approval, you can go without them.
Yeah, I'm.
Or do you want time within tables, so if you have.
I'm okay, if you guys are comfortable with it, I just have to contribute it. You're good with it, go with it.
Debbie's okay, how about you, Mike?
Yep.
I'm good.
All right, so motion then.
I make a motion, we accept the consent cap agenda, items one, two, and three as stated.
Second.
Now that includes units, anybody?
There are no minutes.
Oh, no minutes, I'm sorry, just read that. All right.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And. Our department, Marcy, do you have any?
So, yeah, we got winter fire schools canceled this year, they canceled it because of COVID, of course, so. Kind of crappy, that's something we do every year and get a lot of good training at. Also, a lot of training's been canceled, so we have some online training that's coming up soon for a few people. We've been working on the Hummer pretty much every week. We got it pretty close now. We're gonna mountain the actual pump to the tank this tomorrow night. So after we have that mounted, we'll probably be purchasing another battery soon to actually get that pump pumping water and then we can actually test it well and rate that pump, so. Burn season. Burn season's gonna be horrible this year, so don't expect many days. We're getting that time of year where our. Our actual clearing index is horrible, so our parametric pressure's down low, so we don't get that five hundred feet. So you cannot burn unless you're above five hundred feet with your clearing index. So don't expect to burn much this year as of right now. Season was shut down this last, I think it was Saturday. But we are allowed to burn, we just are not going to have very many days above five hundred, so. Don't expect too much of that. Uh, we had a firefighter that got hurt about a month and a half ago. He was riding his motorcycle in the St. George and he got hit by a car, broke his pelvis, his femur, I mean, he was pretty beat up, he had a. A bleed in his brain. He's actually just showed up this last week and he's doing good now, so little update on him. CARES Act, I went over with John, John helped me out a ton. Thank you to him, thank you to everybody that helped us with the CARES Act stuff. I know Michelle helped out a lot. We pretty much got everything ordered. I'll have the invoice on the tech gen gear tomorrow, tomorrow morning, so I'll get that to you, John. But thank you very much. We're gonna use all that equipment, the lockers, the gear, the boots, everything, so it'll go a long ways. We haven't had a lot of new gear for a while, so. It's gonna help us out a lot. We have, we had a couple lightning strikes, we did a mutual aid with Hildale just a couple weeks ago on a lightning strike they had at my Hummer three. We got on that one pretty quick, got lucky, the wind was picking up, so. Right now, let's see. Cars, everybody's been noticing the, I've noticed it a lot and I've heard a lot from people. People are getting very impatient right now on the on the roads. I don't know what the, seems like there's an uptick in people doing some stupid stuff on our roads right now, so. Watch out for people passing people in like that lane, they're not supposed to pass in and watch out for people ahead of you, braking, watch out for people turning. We've been having a lot of close calls lately and it's, eventually it's gonna catch up, so.
So actually, they put more lanes in to be stupid in.
Yeah, it's it's getting crazy. I mean, it's like they have more time to speed up, to get out into an old lane and just do whatever they want, so it's it's a straight up raceway right now.
What the cream is going on?
And we're not getting water yet, we haven't got slick roads yet, we're lucky so far, so that's coming, it's coming real soon, so there's gonna be. I'm expecting a busy winter this year, so. Let's switch that screen back to the people. Also, I think that's about it. We don't have too much training come out, so with this COVID, so. Any questions or? Good. Thank you.
Thank you. And. Move on to public comments. Council, have anybody, anything you want to share? We'll go ahead and open it up for public comments. Anybody have public comment? Anybody online with public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close up comments. We are going to request that we have a closed session today. And so let's go ahead and move to the next item and then we'll adjourn to a closed session. So Debbie, that's your favorite.
I make a motion, we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting's technically still in session when you have a closed meeting, so you would just adjourn to a closed meeting to discuss reasonably imminent or pending litigation.
Okay.
I move that we adjourn.
To a closed meeting.
To a closed meeting.
To discuss reasonably imminent or pending litigation.
To discuss reasonably imminent or pending litigation.
And second, second. And vote.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thanks, gentlemen.
They would have to be, they have a questionnaire.
Marty, I'm not in that meeting right now.